All right, good morning, everyone. I'm going to call our county board meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlongen. Commissioner Heinan.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
All right, move into approval or amendments to our agenda. Monty, do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, you have a letter on the dais there addressed to human services employees for board consideration. Could we please add that right before county administrator report, undermine nine oh five items, again, right before county administrator report? You also have on the dais, it's, it's an existing item, it's simply the agenda item for the classic comp program. I put it there so you would see it has the county attorney's signature on it, and that's, that's all we have.
All right, move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second to approve our amended agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the chair. As we begin today, please turn off all your cell phones or put them to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, no one here? Okay, thank you. All right, move on to our first item today, consent agenda, items one through 10.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve consent agenda items one through 10. Is there any further discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. All right, Monty, we're going to move right into recognition of highway employees Mark Lloydold and Tim Stein.
Yeah, can we ask Chris to come up? I believe Chris submitted the nomination. The what again? Oh, I'm sorry, hang on just a second.
You give me a moment, a moment, sir. We were using that camera earlier today. I still want to be on.
Yeah, wait. Thanks, Beth. There we go.
Thanks, Chris. Good morning, Chris, go ahead.
All right, so, yeah, the employee recognition. So, as you guys are aware, the county engineer left the county last year and had a full workload at that time. The assistant engineer at that time also had a full workload, and those duties fell to our assistant engineer, Mark Lloydold, for that time that the county engineer was away. And I thought that he did a really good job managing the department, everything. The fact that he was able to get out the largest road construction season in Benton County history, tune of a little bit over thirteen and a half million dollars, over forty miles of roadway that was either overlaid or reclaimed, over two hundred pipe were replaced. If you stacked the pipe end to end, it was a little over three miles of pipe length that was put in, doing that with a short engineering staff, and I don't mean in, in height, but not being fully staffed. And that's why we also wanted to recognize our engineering technician, Tim Stein, because a lot of that engineering technician work had to fall to him. Over the winter, a big chunk of the winter, I think he was the only one, we were able to hire a former employee back temporarily. But then this summer, to, to deliver that road program, you know, we have our technicians out there inspecting that. That's the way we protect the county taxpayer investment is by having staff out there in the field, inspecting the contractor's work every day, measuring the quantities. That's what most people don't realize. We pay based on the quantities that our technician goes out there, measures, surveys, and verifies as being completed correct, and then we pay the contractor based on those quantities. So, Tim worked a lot of overtime this summer, delivering that forty miles of county road projects this, this summer. So, I just wanted to recognize them. I really appreciate the work that they put into the department. I think for the most part, it was a very successful year. The weather helped out, no big issues with the, the projects. We got all the projects covered up and striped and ready for, for winter now, so.
Great, awesome, thank you. Can we have the gentleman come forward, and we're going to offer them a certificate here.
I have closer pictures.
Because I want to come up.
Excuse me?
I'll come up.
You can come up.
You need support?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tim, congratulations. Thank you so much for all your efforts. And Mark, thank you so much for your efforts.
Nice job. I've heard a lot about you, so.
I heard a little bit.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll have you down front where you can.
Mark, you recognize.
You're fine. So much abuse.
Look at her.
That's a lot of pictures.
Cameras have big bazooka camera.
Sleeping in the car.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, is anyone here?
Don't believe anything, though, Tim.
Is anyone here from the jail?
I don't know.
Is anyone here, though, like, is Charlene or anyone with?
So, just before Mark and Tim go.
Sheriff is. Oh! Troy is here.
We had.
He's the one with the gun.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pop.
So, before Mark and Tim go, you know, it used to be up in my area, I heard a lot of conversation while, we know when we leave Benton County and enter Morrison County because of the roads, and we heard a lot of comments and a lot of good things about, boy, Benton County's really moving forward to get their roads in shape. I think, you know, our, our sales tax and the extra money that we put forward and the job that you guys do has made us look pretty good. Multiple comments about, oh, Benton County's really getting their act together this year, so, you know, kudos to you guys in the highway department.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We're here this morning to also honor a couple of my detention officers, Masu Hansmeyer and Daniel Maticewitz. The jail can be a difficult place to navigate, both for inmates and for our staff, and there's occasions where inmates reach kind of the lowest point in their lives and they get despondent, and thankfully, we have staff that are attentive to the responsibility we have to make sure that the people put in our charge leave in just as good a condition as the time that they entered our charge or better. So, back in August, Masu was working within one of our units, and he noticed that, well, when you get, when you work in a unit, you eventually kind of understand some of the patterns, and we are all creatures of habit and some of the things that go on, and he noticed that things just weren't as he was used to. They just didn't seem to be normal. He took it upon himself then to start to try to figure out why, what was going on. We have the ability to monitor text messages, monitor phone calls, and keep track of why, what is being said going in and out, and in checking to see what was wrong, he found that there was an inmate who was making some, some self-harming statements on, on one of these texting devices that they have. It wasn't as simple as, well, it's John Smith's texter, we're just going to go talk to John Smith, because sometimes, even though it's against rules, some of these inmates pass them around. And so, thankfully, Masu and, and his partners were able to do some detective work and figure out who the person actually was that was sending these messages indicating that he was about to harm himself. When they figured out who it was, he and Daniel Maticewitz went to this man's cell and found that he had assembled a noose with some sheets and was hanging himself. Due to their quick work, they got him up out of the noose, and, and their efforts saved this man's life. And so, we're here today to recognize the outstanding work of, of Masu and Daniel to make sure that this person was brought safely through his incarceration time and recognize the fact that they saved this man's life and contributed greatly to the operations of our jail, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Masu, if you'd come up, please, that'd be great. We'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, great job. Masu, thank you so much. Like to get a photo with you, too, because you could have front and center.
In front of Scott again.
Yep, just hide me, you're fine. All right, thank you. Thanks, Kim. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, Monty, we'll move on to the DDA classification compensation maintenance program.
This is a subject that, that we have been talking about for quite some time. Probably goes back to when we did the countywide classic comp study, which was implemented in actually July of two thousand twenty-one. At that time, our compensation consultant, David Drown Associates, let us know about a maintenance program that they developed for other cities and counties. Basically, instead of doing the large class and comp study every decade or so, you would instead review about a third of your positions every year on a rolling basis, and I think the notion there is you avoid the extraordinary amount of time and costs associated with a big study every ten years. Instead, you, and you're keeping yourself up with the market, so the, the annual review would, would basically accomplish two objectives. You look at internal issues, in other words, has a position changed, its duties, and so on and so forth, which would require possibly a grade change, but then you also compare those, those, those classifications to your labor market and possibly make labor market adjustments. Again, to keep yourself up with the market. You can tend to fall behind a lot when, when ten years goes by. So, I think that's the purpose, that's, that's the goal. So, we've had conversations about this, I think, prior with the board and committee of the whole, with our management team. We talked to a couple of counties, we talked to Moore County and Goody County. They report very good experiences with it, great satisfaction, it's working really well. So, David Drown has this program in, in quite a few cities and counties already and has for a while. So, the agreement that you have in the packet was reviewed by our assistant county attorney and has their signature. I think you see that on the, the agenda form. A few of the details, so it's a, it would be an annual cost of twenty-one thousand to review a third of our classifications. We have basically a hundred classifications, so around thirty-three or so would be reviewed each year. My recommendation is that the compensation consultant would select those third based upon various factors. We could provide input, we could say, hey, look, you know, we're having difficulty recruiting for this position or that position, and they would take that in consideration, but we would look to the compensation call consultant to select the third for, for review. If I could, Mr. Chair, I wanted to point out, there was one last minute change to the agreement which did make its way into your packet, and I want to point that out for you. So, it is in section nineteen, section nineteen, and it's under the, it's called ownership of work product. David Drown Associates said, hey, we would like the opportunity to be able to use your job descriptions with other clients. In other words, they rewrite a job description for us, and they think it's, it's useful to use it in another client. I think that's totally fine. I have no objection to that whatsoever. So, we added a sentence in section, it's the next to last sentence, it says, "The client agrees the consultant may use job descriptions prepared for client with other clients without compensation to client." So, that, again, I think that's totally fine. You know, we're all, you know, counties tend to sort of help each other out and share and so on, and I see no problem with that whatsoever, so.
Monty, I would, I would assume that that would be reciprocated on us as well.
It goes both ways, absolutely, it goes both ways. You bet, yep. So, the goal here, Mr. Chair, is to begin this actual process in January, so the compensation consultant would recommend that third to begin review. The department's then would be asked to review those positions, do position questionnaires, to tell the consultant, hey, here what, here's what changed with this position. They do their market review, bring back a recommendation to the county board regarding any possible changes in, in grade and pay grade.
All right, any questions?
And that's essentially it.
Any questions for Monty, or I see Tessa's with us online.
Yeah, Tessa's, Tessa's with us online?
Any questions?
Good morning, Tessa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me.
Any comments or anything, Tessa, you'd like to share?
You know, I would just echo kind of how Monty explained, and I know that you just gave your engineering and highway department an award. I created this program based off of the pavement improvement plan when I was in public works, because your employees are your greatest asset, so looking at it every year more frequently allows you to make minimal changes, which are minimal budget constraints and all of that, but you are maintaining your greatest asset, your employees, but they are your biggest part of your budget, and that's why we created it, because we don't want you to do the study every ten years, get so tired, then throw it on the shelf, and then let things happen. So, that is why we created this, and it really does work, because we can watch the market, we can help with job descriptions, and the industry's just changing so quick, so we can make those things at a faster pace, but also respond to the board's budget and any other constraints that we have.
I think for the three new commissioners that came on board a few years ago, that was a little bit of a surprise to us, when we came on with the twenty-one comp study.
Yeah.
Basically, needed to approve it, so I think right away, we talked about doing a maintenance program, so I'm glad we got to where we're at today.
And we're still working with that initial.
Absolutely.
With the.
Any questions for Monty or Tessa?
And I, I agree.
Yeah.
This is something we need to do annually.
Well, and we'll probably, you know, eliminate the big cost one time, plus it's more fair to our employees and maybe more fair to the county as we go on this roller coaster here. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion second to approve this agreement with the David Drown Associates for classification and comp maintenance program in January first. Any other discussion?
I guess I just have to hope that we're getting Tessa to do it.
Exactly.
You're still stuck with me, yes.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you, Tessa.
Thanks, Tessa.
Thanks.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You as well.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to appoint a Benton County representative to St. Cloud Regional Airport Authority Board.
So, Ms. Chair, Ms. Heinan and Pop, we're going to address this issue for us.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Pop. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we actually did have a conversation, and we did pick, pick someone to be on the board, but prior to that, I spent two months doing the research and talking to Kurt Hunstinger, mayor of Stock Rapids, about what kind of person are they looking to to fill this position? And then I also spent about an hour on the phone with John Gray about the same thing, you know, what, what are we looking for? You know, the first thing that they said is, we do not need anybody else involved that's got airport into it. They wanted a business owner. They wanted somebody in the area that has strong qualities, you know, and a very good business individual. So, I had three members, three people, and pretty soon after John spoke, he said he'd like to see somebody from the BEP board be put on there. Well, that just eliminated two of my three, and Ed and I talked, and our recommendation is to put Kevin Johnson on the airport authority board.
Right. You know, I had one person in mind, he was in, one of the finalists for the last name, and got, you know, great airport authority, and he was one of the managers when Quebecore was in there, maybe a little bit of business or whatever, but I think Kevin Johnson has got a good handle on what's happening in Benton County, you know, probably throughout the whole county, and I think he'd be a really good candidate for that.
Can you remind me the term, is it a?
It's a three-year term.
Three-year term.
So, also before, I had a conversation with Kevin, and I told Kevin, make sure you know what you're getting into. So, he did the research, you know, with the airport authority of the amount of meetings and the commitment and the time, and he was actually fine with that.
Did you tell him that? We expect him to report back to the board a couple times here?
Yes, I did. He said, yep, no problem.
Okay.
So, Ms. Chair, the, the question before you would be to appoint Kevin to the unexpired term of Mayor Hunstiger, which runs through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. That's what we would ask you to consider today.
Yep, and I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion second to appoint Kevin Johnson to fill in the unexpired term of the mayor from Stock Rapids. Any other discussion?
Hunstinger?
Yes, thank you.
And then that actually starts January first.
Start January one, okay?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.
Thank you, guys, for.
Thank you, guys, for doing that.
Right.
All right, consider the revisions to fiscal policies governing credit cards.
So, here's why this issue is up, is up. We had heard from human services, particularly Child Protection Unit, and here's the scenario. So, a social worker needs to place children out of, out of home, you know, in a foster care situation, but, for example, those kids may need certain essential supplies, or maybe it's an infant, you need a, a playpen or something of that nature, and the, where they're taking this, this child doesn't have those things, they don't have those essential supplies. So, what I was hearing was that the employee would then have to put that on their own personal credit card and have to front that and then get reimbursed later, and I think we felt that wasn't fair for that employee to have to do that. So, human services then proposed to change our credit card policy, then to allow the child support, excuse me, I always say child support, the Child Protection Unit, to have a credit card which employees could then check out, take with them to Target, take it to wherever, and use that to purchase these essential supplies for, for kids in placement. So, that's what the, the policies do on page ten, Mr. Chair. At this point, pretty much credit cards we have, they stay here, and we use them like to make hotel reservations and, and things like that, but this would be different. It'd be allow that card to actually leave the premises and go and be used in a retail setting to purchase these essential supplies. Again, that's, that is shown on page ten. So, basically, that's the one change. You could take the card. All our other internal controls and processes apply to credit cards like we have in the past, but this does make that change.
All right, any questions for Monty?
Mr. Chair, so, Monty, with that credit card, I believe I read it was a hundred dollar, the most they could charge, is that correct?
That's not in the policy.
It's not.
I know, management, if they wanted to, management could, like you could with your own credit card, you can put limits. We haven't discussed that, I guess.
That's where I was.
You know, we, I think that's something the department can work out. Do they want to put some parameters on the card? As you know, these days, you can go in and, you can limit the kinds of places where you can use the card, how much the transaction can be, those kinds of things. I guess I would leave that up to the department to kind of work that out.
And that was my question, you know, what kind of limitations are they going to put on it?
They can put alerts on it if it's used somehow where it shouldn't be or whatever, so.
Thank you.
I think this is very much needed, and I think we can trust the employees.
Well, I, I think more or less trust the department heads, because I, I think there's got to be some watchful eyes on this.
And I think we had some good communication about that at our house.
And think of it this way, up until now, they've been putting it on their own.
Correct. Been fronting it on their own cards, right, yeah, and that just doesn't seem fair.
No, it doesn't.
All right.
Motion to approve the revised Benton County fiscal policy as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve that fiscal policy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, move on to the letter to human services.
Oh, well, you have the letter. Again, the motive there was to inform folks in human services about the separation of public health from human services, some discussion that occurred at the committee of the whole, what the board was thinking behind this, some, some of the benefits, perceived benefits of, of the separation, and I think the, the goal was just openness with the department about, hey, here's what's going on, here's what we're thinking, and here's a possible timeline for when this will occur. So, if the board is, is good with that, I guess if they ask for, for consent for the board chair to sign, then we'll get that sent out to the entire department.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Nope.
Okay.
After this.
All right, we have some consensus on that? Need a motion on it at all?
If you'd like to, please, sure, yeah.
I got something to say, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner Heinan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for putting this letter together. I, I think it'll help clarify some things, but not all, but in recent conversations with people, they would like the board to send out a monthly letter about what's all going on. So, I think we should try to do that every month, if we can in the future.
Just to human services?
Yeah.
In general.
Well, you know, one thing that folks could do is they could always watch the meeting on YouTube afterwards.
Yeah, they could.
It's all there. It's all there, right, yeah.
I guess I'd be more inclined for a countywide letter instead of just human services.
Five, and it's.
I don't, I don't want to single out, that we just do it for human services.
No, that, I didn't put human services in there, okay?
Well, I thought that was the intent.
You just assumed.
I, I did.
All right, is there?
Nope.
That's good. Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve this letter to human services for an update and allow the county board chair to sign. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Commissioner Kapinski?
Thank you, sorry about that. I was jumping the gun. I was just, this is going back to our previous one on the foster care. It was just weird when we were talking about that. I had a LinkedIn pop up for Heather Jenton, and they're doing a foster kids drive for Christmas, and they got a tree over there at Franzen, so if anybody's interested, they can pick up a card. I thought it was just weird we were talking about it, and it popped up, so.
Your phone was listening.
It was, and I'm supposed to have it off. I usually use it for my calculator, so.
I'll back you up on that.
Okay.
All right, Monty.
All right, a number of things on administrator's report. I did put the monthly financial report on here, and I, I would just simply ask if any board members have questions or comments about it. I'm, I was intending to go through it page by page, I'll just simply answer any questions or what, if you have any, on the monthly financial report.
Any questions on the financial?
It's usually in consent, and we don't really usually cover it in detail, so.
I don't know, he's got four more minutes yet, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, he'll, he'll figure out a way to burn through that. Go ahead.
So, let's move on then. Discussion direction on human services director succession plan. You know, we, I think we had to have that discussion about public health before this matter could move forward, and I think that issue now has been resolved. So, that means it might, it looks like to me, we're going to be recruiting essentially for a social services director, which means we'll make some revisions to the job description, and, and I know Emily has already started on that. So, I, I think at some point, we need to, you know, set forth a process and who's going to be involved in a recruitment for a director. So, a couple, so some things to throw out for the board today. Are you comfortable, then, with a traditional posting to have it recruited as we normally would? In other words, put it out there to the world for recruitment that's posted in all the various places that we do? And secondly, in the past, with the department head positions, we've had two board members on a selection committee. If you're inclined, you could, you could tell us today who. If you're inclined, you could tell us today who those two board members are and at least we'll know that. And I'll then would work with Emily to get it, you know, posted out there to the world on Neilgov and elsewhere, so get that ball rolling.
Thoughts on the process and the committee?
Process is, sorry, Mr. Chair, process is fine and I would like to be on that committee.
We're talking about the HR person, correct?
No, this is the Human Services Director.
HR's next.
Human Services. So, we have, so.
We have consensus on the process first?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with the process?
We gotta get going eventually, anyway.
Get it posted, get it out there. Yeah, okay, so that's, we got that? We'll get it posted, get it out there.
I'll sit on that committee also.
Good, perfect. So, Commissioners Johnson, Commissioners Heinen as our two representatives. That's great. Me just had one thing. So, I was having a recent conversation with Andy Zimney, our consultant for Employee Strategies, about these recruitment processes. And he urged us to maybe take a little different look at things and maybe kind of make our processes more open. So, I had the thought as we were talking about, well, how about, for example, once the selection committee narrows it down to, let's just say, a few finalists? You then have sort of an open forum section where you have the finalists here. You invite the employees to all come in and meet the finalists. That's pretty typical, like, for example, in other governmental recruitments where if you've been involved in recruitment perhaps at a city for a city administrator, that's something they often do. Well, they'll have these large public forums where they even actually allow the public to come in and pose questions and get to know the candidates. But I think school superintendents, they often do that. So, I was thinking, hmm, okay, this might be an opportunity to allow the employees to meet the finalists, ask them questions, give you all the boards and feedback on how they perceive these individuals. And I think it might, again, it's a nice time to kind of maybe take a fresh start to how we look at recruitments, get a little more involvement from employees. Now, I should stress, of course, this decision is yours as the county board. I don't want anyone to sort of think that's ambiguous. This is a decision of the county board. I'm just suggesting this is an opportunity for additional input and employee involvement, engagement to this process.
Commissioner Kupinski?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I applaud the approach on this. The only thing is, is I have personally seen two of these that went forward this way and it did not, the board did not pick, or the council did not pick the chosen one of the staff.
Yeah.
And it turned very ugly.
Yeah, I think the process is to get the employees involved, but, you know, in today's world of social media and everything that goes on with it, they can probably have this person at a negative start before they even start if we choose somebody that the employees don't like and we're maybe looking more at qualifications, what we think, and they're maybe looking at something different. So, I would move with caution towards that.
Well, I tell you what, why don't you just think about that one? I want to toss it out as an idea, but, yeah, let's just think about it. One thing else that Andy suggested is is possibly having your finalists go through some kind of personality assessment. When our last director was hired, we did that. We sent that, we sent that person to an organization called Martin McAllister down in the metro. Andy offered a couple of different personnel assessment tools that they can make available. So, it's something to think about. It's an important position and you might want to have a person go through one of those too.
Commissioner Pop?
Who else? We've sent somebody else to.
Yeah, Mark McAllister over the course of the years, because I can remember getting the report back, but I don't know who it was.
Yeah, we have. You're right about that. I can't remember exactly who.
I've seen a couple of reports about them.
I know Human Service Director, we did, yeah, but I don't remember who the other one, but someone else did, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess I'd be more inclined for that than to have the employees of that department weigh in on that decision. I'm a little skeptical on that.
Commissioner Heinen?
You know, everyone's looking for transparent transparency.
I know.
You know, if you're looking for all employees, I would really, really push it down to just supervisors. I mean, a small group instead of all employees, if we so choose to go that direction. But that's something we really should highly think about.
I was just gonna say, let's think about that and have some more conversation about it.
I'd like to have more conversation because I don't want to kick the can down the road to go somebody that's not even a work hero and all of a sudden they say, oh, this is the best candidate.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, we're taking the, you know.
I got one more question.
You know, I, again, I think it's great to have more openness and more involvement and more buy-in. We also have to think too about what process are we subjecting applicants to? We don't want to like make this really super, you know, terrible for them and then walk away with a terrible experience. So, you have to find some kind of decent balance, I guess.
Commissioner Heinen?
So, Monty, in the past with these candidates, have we ever gotten questions from like supervisors or employees brought to us? So that we could share some of that stuff?
No.
I mean, that would be one direction instead of having everybody here in person or whatever. You know, go ahead, throw it out.
Yeah.
Those are questions.
I don't recall in the past asking for questions, sample questions or ideas from employees or supervisors, no, no. It's been pretty much limited to the selection committee.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think one thing too, if you decide you want to have this employee forum, you could definitely establish, you know, kind of guidelines and expectations beforehand. I mean, you could again make it clear that the board reserves, you know, the ultimate decision to make this, to make the decision, but you want to hear what employees, their reactions to these finalists. You want to hear some thoughts from them. It's kind of again, it's sort of a meet and greet kind of situation of getting to know them. So, but again, you could definitely establish very clearly what expectations and parameters are going into it. There's no misunderstanding.
I think as you said and Commissioner Heinen said, let's think through some of this process a little bit and have further discussion on that.
But for now, we're gonna get it posted. Commissioners Heinen and Johnson will be on our selection committee and we'll get it going.
All right.
We're gonna get it going. All right, HR Director, so that's been posted for now three, four weeks. Last time I asked Emily, we had 13 applicants. We're gonna stop around December 1st and review those applications. Emily's gonna help sort through, do they meet MQs? And then our selection committee then is gonna take a look at all those those folks that meet MQs and decide who to invite for interviews. The selection committee is gonna be Sheriff Heck, Roxanne, Steve Sting, Emily and Shannon in our HR area. So, those five, of course, myself, will be on that selection committee. So, hopefully, you know, when we pause in December 1st, we'll have a good, some good candidates and we can have some, we'll schedule some interviews, yeah.
Commissioner Kupinski?
Mr. Chair, can we have a board member on that too?
You can, yeah, you can.
I'd throw my hat, I mean.
Mr. Chair, I do believe, I do believe it's important that we do have at least one board member on that committee.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean.
Who would that, who would you like?
And I would recommend Commissioner Kupinski because he too has been a business owner just like myself with a lot of employees, so.
Willing to do that?
I'm in.
All right, so if we could add Commissioner Kupinski to your committee for the HR Director?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so again, on or around December 1st, we'll, the way we usually do it is we we make those available to you online and we can just review them on Neilgov, yeah.
That works.
Have to deal with a bunch of paper.
No, save a tree.
Or three or four. All right. Employee Strategy Engagement Project. Maybe you saw the email I sent out yesterday to all employees. I think folks are kind of eager to know what's next, what's next. And Andy and I had a conversation a few days ago and he would like to then have a specific session with you all to share the results, talk about some ideas he has for how you might then move this forward. He has, I think, a lot of great ideas that can help turn the survey into action. I mean, I think that's what people look for, right? I mean, the survey is one thing. Action is really what matters, is what do you do? And I think that's a conversation he's ready to have with you all is, okay, here's some things possibly you can do. I'm sure, of course, he wants to hear your ideas too. It isn't just, of course, consultant leading this. It's you all two having your own ideas. So, when we schedule committees of the whole, I'd like to schedule a time for you all to have that session, just you all with Andy, and then we'll go from there. But I think again, there's a lot of interest in knowing, okay, where's this going? Where's it going? Yep. Uh, update on BEP. So, I went to the last BEP board meeting. I see Amanda's here. So, the BEP Board approved an agreement whereby they would administer our Affordable Housing Aid for us. So, I drafted up an amendment to the existing service agreement. We have BEP and that they would, they would receive and administer those funds for us. And again, I should just stress, it's using the statewide Affordable Housing Aid, so it's gotta be used in a manner consistent with that law. And again, it's oriented towards affordable housing and it's defined in the law what that means. But that is the parameter around that money is affordable housing. Uh, let's see, what's next? Legacy Grant, two board members were at the Park Commission meeting last night. We pretty much wrapped up the discussion about all the new features at Bend River. So, just back up for a second. So, we got an $800,000 legacy grant to make substantial improvements to Bend River Park. And the Park Commission's been working the last few months with Paul Schrader from SRF on the design of these new features. And pretty much last night was the conclusion of that discussion, finalizing what those features are gonna be and what they're gonna look like. And so, they should, it should go out to bid then this winter, February or so, and then construction would begin this spring and completion in next fall. The major features, essentially, one is the, is a new shelter building, a very large shelter building by the farmstead. It's designed to seat about 100 people. It would have electricity, a big serving counter, picnic tables and so on, and again, abundant electrical outlets. There'd be substantially more trails out there. Right now, some of the trail's kind of dead end. This would create more continuous loops, so make it a little more interesting for folks. More signage, improving the trail down the canoe landing, those are the big things that come to mind. So, lots of neat improvements that should be done by this time next year. Yep.
Good.
Commissioner Heinen joined us and kind of heard some of that discussion. Commissioner Pop, of course, has been there as a member of the Park Commission, so, yeah, I think it's been a good project. It's been really nice working with Paul from SRF. A lot of input from Park Commission on these features, so, yeah. Yeah, it's been a neat, it's been a neat project to be involved in. Uh, let's see, I think my last thing was still looking for a Park Commission representative for Commissioner Slungus District. Actually, last night though, Commissioner Pop, you mentioned one person.
I mentioned the person that I.
Right, so you're gonna talk to someone.
Yeah.
I know Roxanne.
You can't, you're having trouble finding anybody that wants to do it, right?
Roxanne was also going to advertise for this open and other, like Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, so that may be out there already.
Okay.
But if you have someone that's interested in parks.
I think she'll be, but I'm not 100% sure till I have a conversation with her.
She would come highly qualified if she would be willing to do it.
The person does not need to live in District 5. They can, the ordinance allows them to live anywhere and they have to be a county resident, basically. So, I guess she'll let us know, Commissioner Pop, if that's a viable candidate, okay?
If I can get a hold of her.
Yeah.
And if you don't, I do, I might have somebody.
Okay.
Mary Kivvy had to give up her spot because she moved to Allen County.
All right.
It's all had.
All right, any questions for Monty, that we have him? Thank you. All right, we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Heinen.
Thank you. We'll knock Holt to order the Human Services Board, approve or amend the agenda. Anything to add to it, Sandy?
I do not.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now they'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda item number one, what would you like to do with that?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now they'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, Sandy, are you turning this one over to Jaclyn?
I am.
Thank you. Request approval for the attendance of the PHEP Coordinator servicing as a Minnesota representative on National Nacho Work Group.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, so I'm here today. Good morning, Commissioners, first of all. But I'm here today to just request approval for our FEP Coordinator in Public Health who was selected through a lottery process to serve as one of two individuals in the state of Minnesota to represent the rural Public Health Emergency Preparedness Voice on this national work group. This national work group will provide feedback to NACHO, the National Association for County and City Health Officials, who provides the recommendations to the CDC for the FEP capabilities or Public Health Emergency and Response capabilities, which guides our work at the local level. So, this is a really great opportunity for our rural Benton voice to be heard at that national table, providing impact on those capability standards that we follow. And our FEP Coordinator has been with us here for 10 years and she serves a very important role in our region in FEP as well and I think would do a good job representing that voice. So, with that, I did just give you a little packet here, just a little bit of background information on what those capability standards are, if you wanted to look that over. But it really is an opportunity for NACHO, the CDC and the states and local counties to work together through that work group to provide those recommendations back to the CDC and adapt those capability standards as times change and public health changes and our response needs change. They adapt the standards and that's what this work group will do. So, as far as costs for us, it would be very, very minimal, really only anything above and beyond what NACHO's not providing. What they cover would be the flight, conference registration, hotel for five nights per diem, ground transportation up to $100, baggage fees up to $40. So, really, it would be anything that fits in our county policy above and beyond those costs, so really, pretty minimal. And then our staff time can be covered through our COVID, our Public Health COVID Response and Recovery Grant through our non-vaccine grant recovery dollars, so. With that, I'll put it to the board, just requesting approval for attendance of our coordinator at this National Nature Work Group Emergency Preparedness Summit in Cleveland, Ohio.
Thank you, Jaclyn. It's pretty ironic of how we were down there in December giving a presentation and now we also have another representative from our Public Health going to this. It's pretty interesting. Any questions for Jaclyn?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jaclyn.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Sandy, anything else in front of the board? Nothing? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned at 9:44 and I will turn it over to our Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Heinen. All right, we're gonna move into our Land Services Director, Roxanne Ackman, follow-up to November 7th open forum presentation, Tina Hellman guarding the sighting of billboards. Roxanne, good morning.
All right, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair.
I see Tina Hellman with this online too.
At the last board meeting, Tina Hellman approached the board about changing the setback for billboard signs. Changing the development code requires, the development code requires an amendment to the ordinance after compelling evidence is provided that a change is beneficial to the county and consistent with the comprehensive plan. The applicant is responsible for submitting an application for a zoning amendment, which is then presented to the Planning Commission for consideration. The process does not follow the same time as a conditional use or interim use permit application. Staff and PC are afforded reasonable time to complete the research necessary to make an informed decision. At this time, it's my professional opinion that there's not compelling evidence to warrant a change to the development code and that Mrs. Hellman should either attempt to meet the required setback or apply for a variance to be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. Without going into too much detail and providing the property owner with more due process than others who would apply for the zoning amendment or variance and are heard by the responsible committee, amendments to requirements such as setbacks are generally not reviewed or approved unless there is a history of consistently granting variances to the provision. There have been a few, there's been few billboards constructed in the past 15 years, but of those constructed, all were able to meet the required setback. In the brief research I conducted, the Planning Commission and County Board intentionally placed stricter regulations on billboards in 2008 after the adoption of the new comprehensive plan. The commercial areas of the county were specifically, specifically along Highway 10 were saturated with billboards that would remain in place for many decades because billboard leases are generally much longer, you know, anywhere from 50 to 100 years or the lifetime of the property. The PC felt that it was, that by increasing the restrictions on the billboards, they were protecting the future visual appearance of Highway 10. While other counties may have lesser setbacks, at this time, we don't know much on whether the sign ordinance was last updated or when the last sign ordinance was updated, nor how it relates back to their comprehensive plan. We do know. We do know that in two thousand and eight, Benton County made the intentional decision to require a fifty-foot setback uh for billboards from the right of way.
Commissioner Pinsky.
Mr. Chair, I wish they would have, back then, took the ditches into consideration too. But that's up for.
Discussion.
Discussion later again. I think things gotta move as we, as we go. And who, there, uh there's a lot of things that have changed since two thousand and eight to now with development and everything. I, I'm not, I guess I'm not here just to say we're just gonna leave it be. I think we need to look into this.
Roxanne, just for clarification, I, you cited that the, uh, I don't know what the term, the right term is, the applicant or could bring forth a ordinance amendment application. I would assume Planning Commission or County Board could also bring forth a potential amendment.
Well, we don't have compelling evidence to look into this because we haven't had any issues. And so in a situation like this, it would be the interested party's responsibility to apply for a zoning amendment.
So am I hearing you say that the County Board cannot request an ordinance amendment?
You can.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
With a variance, there's a cost involved in that if they apply for a variance, correct?
Yes.
How much is that, could you tell?
Four hundred dollars.
And I think that's something that we need to look at too.
Commissioner Heinen, did you have a comment?
I, yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. So I've been involved with a lot of these ordinances, even at the city level on Highway Ten. I'm gonna put things in perspective. I personally don't want any more billboards going down that corridor because you've got four lanes going into two lanes at seventy-five to eighty miles an hour, okay? And then you've got the bridge on a curve that you go under and then pretty soon you've got this electronic sign that's red, that just blows up in your face, you know? And we've had so many accidents through that whole corridor. You know, I mean, we can definitely look at the ordinance, but I personally am not, I don't want any more signage. I don't, or billboards, I apologize, billboards, you know? Signages for the businesses, I don't have a problem with that. But just drive down that corridor and look and see how many billboards are in a five-mile stretch. There's a lot of them, you know, and there's reasons for that.
Any other comments?
Just my opinion.
Yeah.
Could you be more clear, more clear on which area you're talking about, two lanes going to four? Or two lanes?
Highway Ten, Highway Fifteen. Okay, they all combine.
Four lanes going to.
Four lanes going down to two lanes right at the bridge at thirty-three, highway, or County Road Thirty-three, where you've got the on-end entrance and the off entrance around that half curve right there. I drive that every day. I know what the bottleneck is like. I see accidents all the time. Commissioner Gopinski, you know how many accidents are, are between that area all the way up to Little Rock Lake Road, plus all the way up to Rice? I mean, that's a very highly congested area.
It is, but I, the, the history from what I remember is, I don't think there's any more accidents today than as, as from when that interchange was built. I think it was an interchange that was built not quite as safe as some of them should have been.
You should prob, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. You should probably walk the ditches and clean up the ditches and see all the parts from vehicles.
Yeah.
And everything else that are still in the ditches.
I don't, I don't, and I don't think that there's any more, any less billboards when you get north of Morrison County Thirty-four all the way to the Little Falls exit. That is one right after another all the way along there too. So I don't think we're normally strong on the billboards, considering, you know, from what other counties do. I mean, and it's, it's a revenue for some of these businesses, landowners that got, I mean.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pinsky.
My, my concern is, I mean, if the county on one side is doing it and the county on the other side is doing it and we're restricting in between, that's my frustration. It's like, it, to me, I, I think we can over-governmentalize everything.
Well, uh from my perspective is, this is similar, I, I realize it's totally different, kind of, but similar to our policy we had with entrances, right? Was established back in oh-eight, oh-nine.
Right.
I think it maybe merits at least having the discussion.
Take a look at it.
I don't think anybody is sitting here saying, we're changing it.
Uh change it.
But I think it merits some discussion because right here, we have differences of opinion about it, right? So maybe that's something we get together with a cow and have some discussion about it.
Cause I think we know how variance is, I mean, they're, it's, you gotta meet all the criteria.
Well, and it's, they're the final authority.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, so.
You know, I, I, and it, Mr. Chair, I, I agree. Discussion is probably needed.
Right.
You know, to, to take a look, to see if we need to upgrade.
So do you have some consensus, maybe ask Monty to get this set up as a committee of the whole in the future?
Yep. I agree.
I agree.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, so Monty, if you could add that to your cow list, please, at the end.
You bet, it's added, yeah.
All right, any other questions for Roxanne while she's here? Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Chris, Casas Seven and Minnesota Highway Ninety-five.
All right, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning. So this first item is, uh just for information, um I was alerted last uh week um that MINDOT has been looking at this intersection specifically. And I think we've known anecdotally that we've had some severe accidents here um at the, this location. So this is Casas Seven uh over in Glenderrado Township and Highway Ninety-five. North of here, this is the project that we're actively in and in reconstructing. And then here's, here's just a view of it. If you're south of Highway Ninety-five, Ninety-five's here, you're looking north, um and then looking to the left as if you were going to cross it. Um and then I just, I grabbed another screenshot of the other direction. So MINDOT i- is aware of, you know, kind of a crash history there and they've been concerned with it. And so much so that they want to submit uh H-SIP money, Highway Safety Improvement Program money. So this is federal money that MINDOT would apply for. And they're thinking that they may wanna construct a roundabout at this intersection. The money wouldn't be available until two thousand and twenty-nine. So it's some, something I don't see would affect, you know, our, our project that we're designing for construction next year. Uh but I just wanted to make the board aware that this is what MINDOT's looking at. Attached to the agenda item is since some um crash history. With our Mayhew Lake Road project, I think we've all become more familiar with this idea of a critical crash index. Once again, this has a really high critical crash index of uh one point six nine when the critical rate for a similar intersection like this is point four-two. So um one point seven times higher uh than the, than the statewide critical uh rate for similar intersections. So it's enough of a concern to MINDOT that they wanna do something. Pros and cons, um pros is they're not looking for any funding from us. Us counties, when we apply for safety money, this federal safety money, we have a maximum award amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand. If you recall, we got a same grant for our Casas One and Twenty-Nine Roundabout. We knew that that was gonna be a two-and-a-half million-dollar project to construct a roundabout, only getting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money. MINDOT is unique in the way they don't have a maximum award amount. They can get up to ninety percent of construction costs uh to build this roundabout on the state highway. Why that's good for us is they wouldn't be looking for any local match when by their cost participation policy, we'd have two, two out of four legs uh on that intersection, which we could be liable for up to fifty percent of the construction costs. But uh from the s- the district traffic engineer, he says that they're not anticipating needing any uh county funding. Uh they think that if they got ninety percent of the funding through this federal grant, they could come up with the ten percent of uh construction cost. I asked about right-of-way costs. Would they need any additional right-of-way at the intersection? They don't quite know yet. Um and then I obviously asked the question, well, would you be expecting us to help contribute to any of the right-of-way costs? And they said, no, not, at this time, they're not anticipating us contributing the cost of the, the right-of-way. Um you look at it from a functionality standpoint, actually, I think it helps our county roadway. No longer are you sitting at a stop sign if you're on Casas Seven, say you're wanting to go into Sherburne County from Foley. If a roundabout's there, you no longer are waiting for, at the stop sign for Highway Ninety-five traffic to clear out. If you think about how a roundabout works, you yield to those that are already in the circle. So when you're at a roundabout, you're looking to your left. If there's no way to your left, you can go ahead and enter that roundabout without stopping. It could actually improve flow and traffic flow on Casas Seven if a roundabout was there. Likewise, if you're in Sherburne County and you're wanting to come into Foley going north on Seven, once again, it could improve that. You're no longer waiting for gaps or people to slow down on Ninety-five. So I just wanted to bring that up, uh because I just re- recently became aware of it. The applications are due this week or maybe in the state for next week to apply for it. They did ask if I would consider writing a letter of support uh for the application and I said, well, I would like to talk to my board before uh committing yes or no to a letter of support. So for information or for discussion.
So Chris, you talked, you started out your conversation with the pros, is, what's the cons?
Well, the cons, I think, if you're on Highway Ninety-five, you're used to going sixty-five miles an hour on a straight road until you get Malax County. Now you have a roundabout in the middle of that and it's, it's gonna force traffic to have to slow down.
Right.
So I could see that would be a con from a traffic standpoint on the state highway.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinen.
So I'm just gonna throw this out there. I totally agree with this. Now, if you drive, I drive Highway Ninety-five a lot, see my son down the cities. You get to Princeton, there's two roundabouts there. Once you get past Princeton, there's two more roundabouts too, okay? So there is roundabouts down Ninety-five and it does work.
Right.
It does work.
Yeah, um it'd be the same thing as if you go Seventy-one South to Wilmer. There's a roundabout on Seventy-one and I don't know, and that's a bigger roundabout. I would assume that's what this one's gonna be. And it, it's, actually, it's kinda slows down traffic and gives the locals a little more access to the highway.
I tend to agree. One of these things, you look at this intersection, we have LED stop signs, so it's flashing red lights. You look, you've got sight distance for at least a mile, one direction, um a mile the other direction. From an engineering standpoint, you're like, why are people still having crashes at this intersection? It's hard to, to explain, other than maybe you're not able to judge the speed of vehicles on Ninety-five and, and you're misjudging the gap that you have or something like that.
I think sometimes what happens is they're looking too far down the road.
They are. That could be part of it as well, so.
So, okay, any thoughts on his letter of recommendation, any issues with that?
Uh no, I think, go ahead.
Send it, send it.
Yep. It'd be nice to know that we don't have any.
Yeah, exactly.
Skinning the game financially.
You don't usually bring that report, Graham.
Yeah.
You're right. So I would word the letter that we, we support in concept, not committing to any fiscal support at this point.
Yeah.
And word it that way, so.
Thank you.
As in the past, we know MINDOT has always come with a cost share, right?
Well, I'm thinking, what other possible things that we could not have talked about?
Yeah.
Roundabouts, I know, when you design them, lighting is required to light up the intersections at night. A lot of times, that falls to a local cost of paying the monthly service charge for having that electricity meter out there. That already exists at a lot of intersections that we pay monthly utility bills. So that could be something that comes back to us.
But wouldn't, is it fair to say most of those are intersections of county roads, not a state aid highway, or state highway?
Well, Two and Rice, we pay a utility bill for the lights at the intersection of Two, Twenty-One and, and Ten there. Casas Eight and, and Ninety-five on the west side, we pay a utility bill uh there as well. The traffic signals at Casas Twenty-Nine and Fifteen, we pay the monthly electricity bill for the traffic signals there, so.
Mr. Chair, you know, everyone's so, so sold on solar. I can't believe we can't put a solar system in there to run the.
Maybe they should put some panels in the center of the roundabout.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Maybe we should.
All right, thank you, Chris.
All right, very good. Uh all right, the next item. Okay, this is, this is good news as well, MINDOT detour agreement. So if you remember, almost two years ago, um we entered into an agreement with MINDOT to detour onto our county roads when they were reconstructing Highway Twenty-three through town here um and all the way to the Malax County line. And so there was a cost uh determined, uh how much that would, that would be um based on the length of the detour, this factor that the state uses, um times the number of days. So when we entered into the agreement, we anticipated that we could receive about seventy-eight thousand, just under seventy-nine thousand dollars for them using the detour. Well, as things go with road construction projects, um the project took longer than originally anticipated and they ended up using Casas Six as a detour for a portion of the time that wasn't anticipated either. So the new total um is seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty plus eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars for a grand total of eighty-eight thousand, uh eighty-eight thousand, seventy-eight and seventy-eight cents. So um that is what the state owes us for using our Casas highways um as part of their trunk highway detour during their construction project. I think we're ready to receive the revenue. So I brought this up as an agenda item because I believe in my vacancy, there were some discussions, maybe at a staff level, of where to deposit that revenue. Obviously, we have some wear and tear on our roads. The highway department feels like we should receive that revenue for them, you know, detouring that state highway traffic onto our county roads. I would like to suggest that we consider depositing that into our Fund Thirty and more specifically in Fund Thirty into our capital equipment um uh fund. This is eighty-eight thousand dollars we could dump into that fund and help offset the increase in cost for our snowplow trucks that are, that are delayed, um getting those received. It may be, help offset any future um equipment costs that we may have. So that's what I'm looking for today, is some discussion with the board and a consensus or maybe a motion and a second that it's, that uh you're okay with depositing that into the Fund Thirty Capital Equipment Fund.
Commissioner Heinen.
Mr. Chair, Chris, when we set up into a contract with, with MINDOT, they have a set price per mile? And is that non-negotiable?
Yeah, so um this factor is non-negotiable. There's two different methods. If you read into the agreement, uh it mentions a different method. So they use this road life consumed method and that's where they come up with that factor. There's also um this uh, oh no, I, I'm sorry, the gas tax method. Or they can use this equivalent overlay method. And when we entered into this agreement before we approved it, I consulted with some other county engineers to see pros and cons of this. And I was actually cautioned that sometimes using this other method, the counties have resulted in less compensation. So I felt at that time it wasn't worth uh pursuing a different calculation method to determine our reimbursement amount.
So we only have two options, that's it, non-negotiable.
Yeah, so it's these two methods per their standard agreement and this factor i- is non-negotiable, so.
I know the contract we signed with uh the detours going on Three? I get Three and One mixed up, on Three from Twenty-three, Twenty-three to the roundabout?
It's not One.
Cause. Cause I won, thank you, yep. You know, I can honestly tell you, we're getting beat up with that cost. That is just not, not acceptable.
That will be the same factor as what you're getting to?
Exactly, yeah.
Same factor.
It is. The, the question, I think, maybe that's, is this ADT? And so, yeah, we, if we wanna talk about Mayhew Lake Road, so my conversations, I've had multiple conversations with MINDOT about that. They, they seem to be very adamant that um they're just detouring ramp traffic and it's not the full highway traffic. But I think anecdotally, we all know here that there, there's quite a bit of people that are just avoiding that whole intersection. So they may, they would have normally continued on Highway Twenty-three or Highway Ten through that intersection and not needed to use those ramps, they're avoiding that area together and, and using our Casas One.
Is that their ADT information or ours?
Uh that's, that's their method because, yeah, we, cause basically, so this is what, like for thi- this, this contract that's on the screen now, they're saying Highway Twenty-three before construction had ten thousand, nine hundred vehicles a day on it. Um and now they, they agree that they would be detouring, they're assuming they're detouring all that traffic onto this detour route. And the problem is, I think at this point, we're forced to use that data because we don't typically put up our own traffic counters on the state highway and measure that ourselves.
But we could on Casas One.
Yeah.
We can do it on Casas One, yes. And so, and which we have, and so we can show the difference. The problem is arguing where that traffic came from.
Yeah.
Yep.
MINDOT, and I, I have to admit, I would use the same argument if we were detouring traffic onto a city street or a township road. They're gonna say, well, we're only telling those people that need to use this ramp to use your road. We're not telling that other traffic to use your road. And that's where we have this, this conflict. We all know that our Mayhew Lake Road has experienced a lot more traffic since that, that project has started.
Mr. Chair. My, my frustration is, is they detoured, it'll be almost two years by the time this is all done, and they detoured on arguably one of our main arteries that we already had issues on with traffic and, and, and above-critical accidents on five of the seven intersections. These, these, this. These these, this traffic isn't going away because people learn they can go one all the way up to Royalton, basically, and then cut over, and they they do away with the intersection and the backup all the way to Rice from Royalton. I know, I know three to four people right now that's, they're not gonna change it because it's it's scenic. They 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 avoid the main traffic and get back on. And I think we got a bigger problem that I think we need to talk with MinDOT on, and I know you're caught in a rock and a hard place. But I think we need to get, we need to get some people together and just say, look at what you did. Let's use common sense.
So we might want to talk with Morrison County because I think they're having the same issues on their County thirty-four they're coming across. On thirty-four going down to their twenty-one and into Rice or seventy-eight. And so, you know, I mean, why wouldn't you on a Sunday night avoid Royalton? I mean, everybody knows it, and maybe that'll be a way to push them to do something there.
All right.
Sorry to get off subject.
No, that's fine. So we've, we've got these dollars coming from MinDOT for Casas four and six, basically. And so, I, to me, I'm gonna move that we get it put into the Highway Capital Projects Fund, Fund Thirty.
I'll second that.
Right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Thank you, Chris.
All right, so now we'll back, we'll shift our attention back to Casas seven. As I mentioned, and you know that we're in the middle of reconstructing it, we need to acquire additional right of way. And so what's been standard practice for a a lot of years now is to develop a road right of way plat. And this is a tool that's used to clearly denote the road right of way. Now, it doesn't convey the right of way to the county. What it does is it allows us to write easement documents and purchase agreements that clearly describes their parcel and references this right of way plat. The the old method would be to have this long legal description, meets and bounds legal description. But we found, and I think many people have found, that using a road right of way plat more clearly, you know, denotes those that aren't surveyors what the new right of way is or what the existing right of way is, so on and so forth. So the good news is with this is that we have a lot of willing landowners that are that are ready to sign easement documents. We can't have them sign those easement documents until this plat is approved, signed, and and recorded down the hall in the recorder's office. So that's what I bring this to you today, is to, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. But ultimately, desire to have approval for the board chair to sign the plat, and then we can have it recorded. I will add that in your packet, you received, you know, paper copies or electronic copies. We have MyLars that are on their way to be delivered here, yet hopefully still this morning. So they came, they had to be printed on that, you know, that Mylar paper, if you recall what plats are. They're not here yet, but they should be here still this morning. So if it so pleases the board approve, they have the board chair sign.
What would you like to do?
Motion to approve and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to authorize the board chair to sign this completed plat. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye, opposed, it's carried. Thanks, Chris.
All right, that's all the agenda items I had, unless there was any questions that you'd like me to answer this time?
Mister Chair.
So I got a question, did we have another accident on Highway thirteen and and seventy-eight? I noticed when I went through the last couple nights, stop signs now, and there's a different stops, you know, temporary stop sign up there.
Ah, there there could have been, I'm not aware of the top of my head. I know that there was one in Rice. Um, no, that's a little rock road. There was one on Highway ten and Hundred Fifteenth Street, so. It's possible that sometimes there's accidents, people will notice that the stop sign's down with theirs, without an accident report and stuff. So, and once again, that's another intersection that has the LED stop signs on it. So if they took out the stop sign, they were heading towards a blinking red, red sign.
There's been several accidents there, you know, a couple pretty serious ones. I don't know what we should do different there, but we got everything we can do.
That road rumbled up at all?
Yeah, so going north and south, seventy-eight has the stop condition. So if you're rolling north and south, you should be stopping. I believe we have those rumble, those transverse rumble strips there. We have the LED stop signs. We have the the bright yellow stop sign ahead signs posted there.
All right, anything else for Chris? Thank you, Chris. See in a few minutes the ditch authority. All right, commissioner meeting updates, and if I could just remind members that we keep it somewhat short. We have members here for a ditch authority that we're gonna move into, so who would like to start?
I can go.
Okay, Commissioner Pinsky.
We had the, well, way back, we went to the DC tour, or DC for the APO, that went really well. Promoted our projects. We still have one that's kind of out there yet if the if the federal budget ever gets approved. So follow that up with the APO meeting. We're trying to figure out how we're gonna fund some of these APO agendas, whether that's a certain formula within the APO or if we're on our own. So there's a lot more to come. Other than that, we've had, we had our our Senate bonding tour. That went really well. I think, I think we, I think we stand to potentially be on track on that, Chris. What are your, any thoughts on your end?
Yeah, I think that went really well. I appreciate commissioner comments. I thought that was great that Representative Driscoll showed up and provided comments. And I I thought that was interesting. We thought we had fifteen minutes. As soon as the committee gets there, they say, nope, you only got ten minutes. You commissioners did a good job getting it in within the ten minutes. And then old Driscoll talked, but they didn't cut him off, they let him talk. But I think we appreciated his his comments.
He was a good closer.
Exactly, it was very good having him as a closure too. And Chris is right. As soon as he started speaking, he didn't stop, and they did not cut him off. Cause they were always telling us, we've got two minutes, two minutes.
While we're on that subject, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hine and Commissioner Pinsky, Chris, and the court superintendent Brad from Sock Rapids. Um, they all did a great job of getting this information to that that committee in a very, very short period of time, and it was well received, so.
So they evidently know who the boss is when they were.
They do.
They do, yeah.
They do.
Anything else, Commissioner Pinsky?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Pop?
Few things, we had Mike on, I'll make it short. We agreed to hire a lobbyist for environment and natural resources going forward. Nobody, we don't have anybody in that experience part, you know, on our policy committee meeting, so we we agreed to that. They're a long, longtime lobbyist in environment, so that should work out. And me and Commissioner Johnson had the extension committee on the thirteenth. We did the interviews, where the reviews of their personnel. Maybe we need to change that a little bit going forward here. And then back on Sunday night, we had the extension, Commissioner Hine and Johnson were there. That's a really good.
Forage banquet?
Yeah, forage leaders banquet. Really good banquet, it's lively, they keep everybody informed and. And then we had the park board meeting last night with a lot of things that Monty already covered, so that's all that I got.
Commissioner Schlangen?
I had the GSDC, um, investors meeting and their awards event. We did it upstairs in the Harvester Square, that's why I used the extra lighting up there.
All right, anything else? All right, Commissioner Hine?
I've had two meetings with Crew Solutions. I was at a meeting, I'm on the Minnesota Workforce Board. So we had a meeting, state bonding meeting, and then two Shack meetings. There's a lot of meetings with Shack, oh my gosh. I'm so glad I'm on the executive board. Thank you. That's all, besides the cows.
All right, after our last board meeting, a few of us were out at the Watab Town Hall for their solid. Get together, so that was some good discussion out there. Again, the Mayhew Lake Road tour, the bonding tour. Uh, planning commission meeting I had on November eleventh, or excuse me, November ninth. Uh, again, Commissioner Pop talked about our extension committee meeting. Um, of course, we had our cow public health, a discussion that day in separating public health and human services. I did have a fully care board meeting also that evening, and then the forage banquet. I agree with Commissioner Pop, it's always, it's always lively. So it was fun to have Commissioner Hine in there too.
Very enjoyable, even my wife enjoyed it.
I could tell that, she was really, well, I didn't know that your wife was related to who she was and that. We even got into the chicken conversation.
Of course you did.
Weird.
All right, uh, Monty, committee the holes.
No more cows the rest of the year.
Start, start rattling them off.
I've got, I've got about fifteen to schedule for December.
Oh, boy.
I'm on vacation.
Okay, so to recap, you may recall, we were gonna have a committee of hole on highway issues and emergency management. And because of meetings running long, that was, that was canceled. So I presume, word critical, there he is right there, okay. Uh, we'd still wanna commit a hole on highway and emergency management issues. We needed to reschedule also our next meeting with GLT and integrity on the government center project. We just heard we want to talk to employee strategies. We have another one on development code revision. So I guess maybe big picture is is seriously. You you want to try and push all these into January and beyond and 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 not not book anything more in December? Is that? That's that's.
Is there, is there issues with December eleventh?
Yeah, I can't.
You do have, by my, I'm sorry, by my calendar here, you know, obviously you've got the AMC conference, fourth, fifth, and sixth. You do have a committee of the whole scheduled for the twelfth. It's the final budget fee schedule elected official salary cow on the twelfth. And then, of course, then your final board meeting of the year on the nineteenth. So that's what's kind of on the schedule for the rest of the year.
I mean, was it, there is, so you have an issue with the eleventh? Okay, um, do you want to add one of those items to the cow on the twelfth?
So again, that's final budget fee schedule elected official salaries. What's doable to add? I'm just, I'm thinking here of, you know, what's, what's feasible, what's doable to add? You got highway, you got government center, you got development code.
What about the eighteenth too?
We also have, have to have one on housing discussion, right?
Housing? Well, you know, one thing I didn't toss out here, and that is, I think, I I recommend, or it should have a a discussion on the remaining ARPA funds. Housing and otherwise, you know, again, we're approaching end of two thousand twenty-three. I think it's gonna be at some point important to solidify what's the plan. Because we obviously can't throw together a plan and and on short notice of where these resources are going. It needs to be, in my opinion, cemented well in advance.
How about emergency management added on to the twelfth and then move, get into highway and maybe another item on the eighteenth?
Again, it's solely your call, board members, I, you know.
I mean, I, we keep pushing authors, we keep piling up. So could we add emergency management to the cow on December twelfth?
Okay, that's on the twelfth, that would be packaged with the budget stuff, okay?
And then we'll do highway and something else on the eighteenth. Highway and GLT, is that too big of a bite?
I don't think so, no.
Highway and GLT on the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay. Uh, start time?
Commissioner Pop?
Nine.
Nine o'clock.
Okay, all right.
Okay, that leaves us with the org.
It leaves you with ARPA. Yeah, ARPA, you know, isn't necessarily critical, it's just, it needs to be talked about. But then, let's let's jump into the the session with employee strategies. Again, that's that's Andy Zimney would be here to to brief you all on.
How long are you thinking for that?
Ninety minutes.
Do you expect a large agenda on the nineteenth?
Yes, the last meeting of the year is always a doozy. It just is, it's it's a lot of stuff.
I think the ARP, we could push to that first call, first, first couple weeks and do some, and on.
Commissioner Hine, comment on that? Realistically, I think that could be a pretty quick meeting.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, I think.
I don't know.
We gotta have a plan, we gotta have a plan soon.
Yeah, there's, there's only.
So much money.
Paramount.
Paramount.
So Amanda?
Yeah, she's looking interesting back there.
Quit texting, let's just hear your opinion.
Yeah, what's your opinion on the, uh, that housing dollars? I mean, do we need to address this in December?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we can wait for the first meeting in January to discuss it because I already have kind of a plan laid out for it. I just need to, I want to talk with the BEP board and make sure they're comfortable with my plan. But I just, I want to make sure that we address that discussion on how, on the remaining ARPA dollars. So.
Yes.
Beginning of January is what I'm thinking.
I mean, that doesn't hold you up, I guess, is our.
I don't think it'll hold us up on on the overall scheme of things.
So let's, let's just park that one, we'll bring that one back for future scheduling then, ARPA.
Thank you.
So that leaves then the employee strategies, Andy Zimney event.
Can't we add that on the eighteenth? Is that gonna be a long one?
Ninety minutes.
Ninety minutes?
I I, you know, I think that that discussion deserves a sufficient time to explore. You know, the the ins and outs of the survey and then strategies to start. I wouldn't want to cut that one short.
Could you please remind me what we have on the eighteenth right now, that we're looking at doing highway?
That's highway and and GLT, integrity. That's a lot.
That'll take care of the morning.
That's a lot.
No more for that.
Um, I'm just gonna throw this out there, Wednesday the thirteenth.
I got Mike.
Of December?
And we're.
So much for not scheduling things in December, huh?
You thought I was kidding? You got one cow scheduled, that's about all that's gonna happen.
I'm just thinking on, we got our truth and taxation on the seventh, right?
Yep, at night.
At night.
Night.
Could we come in before that?
I was thinking that, could we come in before that?
Four o'clock?
I gotta be a little careful here during, like, the end of month of December on my chores because we're making a move on the cows. And I gotta be there most mornings and evenings.
So you'd prefer to stay away from the seventh?
Well, anything between, say, four o'clock and six thirty or earlier in the morning.
Well, like, we have a six o'clock county board meeting that night.
Right, not any, I can't, that would be as early as I could get here.
Okay.
Are you saying you're gonna be late for that county board meeting?
No, I will make it, but we.
I know Commissioner Pinsky, you probably wouldn't like this, but Friday the eighth. We have a seven W virtual meeting that morning, but that shouldn't be real long.
What day is that, would you say?
I'll have to check and see, I might be flying out of town that night.
December eighth?
I'm just grabbing that.
I know you are.
Open things here. Thursday the fourteenth, what do we try county that morning?
I, I've got, no, I, I'm sorry, I have five meetings that day.
Friday the fifteenth?
I cannot make the fifteenth.
Okay. Wednesday the twentieth.
I could probably do that.
I can do Wednesday the twentieth.
Good, in the morning.
Yep. Can we do eight thirty because it's gonna be a big one?
Okay.
Eight thirty on December twentieth, GLT?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, the survey, survey.
Employee strategies, right, yeah, the employee engagement survey.
That's a ninety minute one?
Let's, I would say, let's skip ninety minutes, yeah, yeah.
Do we have any other small ones we could stick in with him?
Well, the only thing that's left on my list is development code revisions, revisions related to signs and billboards.
We could have some discussion on that. We'll have some discussion.
Let's have some discussion on it, let's do that.
On the twentieth?
Yep, after our survey meeting.
Okay, got it.
So all we have not scheduled then is the ARPA.
Yeah, so we're gonna delay ARPA until sometime first half of January.
Yep, yep.
Let's see, I think that does it.
Wow, that wasn't fifteen.
There goes your December.
All right.
For approve the other cows.
Second.
Hey, motion in a second to approve the cows presented, all those in favor?